For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, January 16th, 2017. Call the ordinances.
Johnson, Nielsen.
Here.
Noah.
Here.
Sexton.
Here.
Walagora.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes, regular session, January 3rd, 2017. There's an error I'd like corrected in this vote for the pump station. It says it was unanimous, but I believe that Council and Noah voted no.
I haven't seen it.
Karen, we'll fix that.
We'll make sure that gets corrected.
All right, thank you. Anything else? No. Thank you. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting you're allowed to address council tonight with the exception of the public hearing for the Brownfield Plan. Anything else, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Hi, I'm Eric Peterson.
I'm Larissa Shawn.
We were here to ask the city if it's okay if we have a beer festival this year on Second Avenue. We can elaborate on that, I guess, but it's on September 30th, so it's a little...
That's a little ahead of what we're going to talk about.
Basically, we'd like to shut down Second Avenue, invite a lot of breweries from Michigan to Alpena to just bring more tourism here. We chose September 30th as the date. That day kind of, or that weekend falls on a weekend when we don't have other things planned here in Alpena. So we chose that date as to keep festivals going. I think the winery has their festival, Austin Brothers, there's a couple of things that happen all right at the same weekends. That was the only weekend that was available. We thought it was a good time to throw a beer festival in, also just to keep every weekend an activity here in Alpena to keep the tourism coming in, especially that late into the year. I know that once school starts, tourism tends to die off around here. A growing trend is beer festivals, and Michigan is, you know, leading the way as far as good breweries. This part of the state just doesn't, hasn't really got anything like that going on. Austin Brothers is doing a great job by being a great business here for Alpena. We would just like to help support them and sort of build upon that business. Hope us to bring that to the council, say that's what we're doing, ask what we needed to do as far as making sure that we comply with everything that the city wants us to do.
Sure. Thanks, Eric. And you're an agenda item, you're a topic on the agenda item, so if you've got some time, if you want to stick around, it probably won't take long for us to get there.
Okay.
And in the event, we have some questions for you, but we do have some other literature along with the package, so if you've got a couple of minutes. All right, thanks. The consent agenda this evening is bills to be allowed in the amount of $447,272.69.
May we accept the decision Judge has presented?
Second.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yep.
Walagora.
Hi.
Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you. The announcement this evening is the intergovernmental meeting because it'll be prior to our next meeting. It's also on the first Thursday of February, February 2nd, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Did you verify the venue for that?
They were not sure where they wanted to have it yet, but it will be Alpena Township hosting it.
Okay.
So, you know, I guess we'd probably have to call to make sure, or they'll probably put an announcement out as to where.
Okay.
They may actually have it at the Township Hall, but they were looking for a different place.
All right, and we'll just kind of keep the meeting posted, or somebody will for...
But at least they know the date and time.
Website or what we do, so. Excellent. Karen? All right, next up, public hearing, proposed amendment to the 2014 Austin Brothers Beer Company LLC Brownfield Plan will start by... Oh, was it on there?
Yeah.
Oh, I marked it off before you got... Good thing I'm not the only one up here. Thank you. I do have proclamation this evening. This is Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week is January 29th through the... or 20th through the 29th. Whereas the Friends of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary was established in October 2010 to support the mission of the Thunder Bay Marine Sanctuary to identify, protect, conserve, and enhance the natural and maritime heritage resources, values, and qualities of the National Marine Sanctuary system for this and future generations throughout the nation. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival brought to the residents of Alpena through a joint effort of the San Francisco International Ocean Film Festival and the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary hopes to bring a larger ocean awareness and environment for interactive learning and inspiration for local filmmakers in the community. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival will utilize the powerful form of visual communication film festivals offer as a means to communicate ocean and Great Lakes issues and bring cultural events to Alpena and surrounding communities in the hope that these films inspire a shared vision of conservation of all marine environments through its stunning, sometimes controversial, and always conversation-starting films. And whereas the Great Lakes region, often considered the third coast, is a vital part of the global waterways, thus making global waterways issues our issues too. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival explores waterways issues through some of the most impressive ocean and Great Lakes-inspired films from around the world, complemented by social events, educational opportunities, and discussions with award-winning, nationally-recognized filmmakers. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of January 20th through the 29th, 2017, as Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week in the City of Alpena. Don't think anyone thinks the festival is here.
I think Jeff was planning on, but I'm not sure if he realized the time.
This just occurred to me, I bet they show up instead.
If Jeff slips it around 7:00, we'll stop for a minute, offer him an opportunity for public appearance.
Well, thank you.
And thank you for picking up on that miss I had. So, we'll open the public hearing now for the Austin Brothers LLC Brownfield Plan, proposed amendment, open the public hearing with a report from the city manager. If it works.
Come on, you're not working. There you go.
Yeah, just thinking.
There you go. Yes, we had a request come to us over a few weeks ago regarding, and we had a discussion with, I think it was Blake at the time, Blake Austin, regarding the situation regarding their water and sewer services that they have. As you know, there was a discussion last year regarding the possibility of a truck route connecting Long Lake Avenue, Miller Street. That did not come to fruition for various reasons, funding, could not put a funding package together, also the routing issues with some of the property owners along there to be able to make it work. But what we, in conjunction with that, our intent was to put a new water main to replace a small, undersized, also broken water main, runs along the railroad tracks there, with a, I think it was 12-inch inch water main connecting in Miller and up to Long Lake Avenue. Initially, the plan was to run behind Wolverine Industries and come out where Commerce Drive intersects Long Lake. And then to run the sewer up to what would be the north property line of the Austin Brothers Beer Company property to provide access for water and sewer to the undeveloped area, this industrial area where there were former businesses, they've been demolished, and it is industrial, but we really did not have good utility service, and this would provide it. The water would also provide redundancy and increased pressure on the north side by doing this connection. Right now, we have installed water up to Elm Street, which is on the south side of the Wolverine property. It's a gravel road. Because of some issues regarding routing that behind Wolverine and up to Commerce, we're actually making the connection to Long Lake through Elm Street. But we, because of conditions out there with the weather and that, we didn't want to tear up Elm Street during the middle of the winter, so we stopped at Elm Street. That portion of the line is activated and does have water running through it. The balance of that will be installed in the spring. The sewer line, which runs, you see as the green on the map, is completed and is in, and both of those were installed this fall, I believe in, what, November of this year, and they're there. Austin Brothers has had, since they've started, some ongoing issues with their water sewer services, especially the sewer. It's an 800-foot basically run that follows pretty much the driveway going in. It's undersized, it has some very strange 90-degree turns in it, and it's been an ongoing problem to where they've had service on it on a weekly basis and on sometimes more than a weekly basis. So it's becoming very expensive and it is affecting their operations. So once we got the line in, it made sense to get that connected ASAP. The other thing is, is to the south of that, that what is now a green area, which is where the old tannery was many, many years ago, you had Arrow Steel, Thunder Bay Moving, and some other businesses that burned there a number of years ago, there is a great deal of still contamination on that property, especially from the tannery. DEQ is actually going to be in, hopefully in February, to, that is out the bid now, to basically excavate and remove a great deal of that. And the fact that we've had issues with sewer line, their connection, their service, of actually, there's some concern too of whether it's the integrity of it and that it could also be leaking sewage then into the ground, was part of the reason that, in talking with the Austin Brothers was, they felt it needed to get done because of the impact on their business, and we did as well. So, at this point, that much has been done. The water service is going to be more critical to them next year as they look at expansion. It also affects, you know, when they're filling tanks, it affects water pressure in the other parts of the building, so it is good to get that replaced, but because again, of conditions on the site, water tables very high, and the weather conditions, and it started with getting frost in the ground, by that time, we're going to hold off, they will be holding off until spring to make that connection. The thing that came up was, in terms of the cost and then, in essence, paying for that service, that is the responsibility of the property owner. And so, in discussing with them, what we came up with was that we do have, the Brownfield Authority does have a remediation fund, which is money we've collected off of previous Brownfield TIFs that once all the eligible activities are paid off, we could put up until the Brownfield terminates, money are up maximum five years, we're usually about a maximum of three, into this Brownfield remediation fund. And we use that to help pay for environmental site assessments, developing Brownfield plans, do care plans, and remediation. And it can be used for other things related as well, site, various types of site work. Currently, the company does have a loan with the Brownfield Authority. We did a Brownfield Plan in 2013 when they were getting ready to buy the property and develop it into a brewery. They had to do a Phase 2 environmental site assessment, and once that was done, and we pretty much knew there was going to be contamination, they then did a BEA baseline environmental assessment, they did a do-care plan, and we did those as grants out of the fund. They also, we put aside money just in case they needed some remediation, which they did need to do. They had to remove some soil and that from within the building, and I'm not sure if there was some outside the building as well, there was some there too. And that amounted to around $13,000, and because it was, as they were getting off the ground, they didn't know how things were all going to go, we did not require any payment or interest to happen for two years. And so, starting in, I think it's June or July of this year, they will start making payments on that loan. And that's a rather extended loan. This particular situation, it's in the middle of winter, they're beginning to prepare and purchase materials for major production in the spring. Also, it's a lower, slower time, less cash flow. So, as we discussed, we thought the best method of funding it could be through the Brownfield Fund, again, through a loan. Again, it's eligible, and that was what this Brownfield is doing, is because of the issue of the contamination that's on there, there is some on their property, but especially to the south, and also the fact that the line is in such a deteriorated condition, we could be causing contamination from that line that's existing, that it met the eligibility requirements as an eligible activity. And that's what we're doing in this plan. Once we go through that process and it is approved, as it has been by the Brownfield Authority Board, they met last Monday and approved it by a vote of five to nothing, with a recommendation for council to also approve it, then the payments will be made from the Brownfield Authority with a repayment by Austin Brothers Beer Company to the Authority. We have estimated, and it's only an estimation, and we always estimate high, because if you have unforeseen, you don't want to estimate low, because then we have to go back through this whole process again to increase the amount. So what we have estimated in terms of cost... There we go. Let me get that a little bigger. There we go. Is to replace the sanitary sewer around $15,000. I think it actually came in a little less than that, but that was the number. And $20,000 for the water service. And the reason the water service is more is, one, we're increasing the size of it, you have to have a hydrant put in out near where it tees off of ours, but also, once it gets to the building, they need to then hire a plumber to do the plumbing work inside. And so that's an added cost. So we put $20,000 for a total of $35,000. We were very confident, the total cost is less than that, but it was much like we did with the loan previously that we gave to them, we had set aside $20,000, they only needed 13, or thereabout. Here, we're expecting the total to be less than this. The way we are setting this up is that once the water is done and we have the total cost, we'll sign a loan agreement with the first payment due May 1st, and it will be for one year. It will be 5% interest, but that will be paid only at the end of the year on any unpaid balance. And we always do that in December. We don't do it quite like banks where they do it every month. We do it only once a year based on the unpaid balance. But we would expect that it will be paid off then by April of 2018. We have gone through all the proper steps in terms of presenting this, we notified all the taxing jurisdictions, basically telling them this will not have any impact on you because we are not creating a TIF, we're using money we've already got. And we have plenty of money within the fund, we have $211,000 in the fund right now, so this will have a minimal impact and will be repaid within a year, whatever is used. We then conducted our meeting with the Brownfield Authority, went through it, they approved it. Now what we need to do is to go before this body, have a public hearing to let the public, the taxing jurisdictions, if they so felt the need to be here to express any opinion, and then after that, if council concurs, we ask you that you adopt a resolution number And once approved, the, I'm not sure if payments have yet been made to the contractor, if they have, by the sewer fund for the sewer, we will then immediately reimburse the fund. We'll just transfer money directly to them from the Authority, remediation fund. And then, when the other is completed, the water, whether we just pay that directly to the contractors, we'll just play that by year. And then with the total, then files for the repayment. Then the repayment will start in May. That's pretty much it. Both Blake and Dana are here, if you have any questions of them or if they wish to say anything once you open it up. Otherwise, the recommendation of the Authority Board and of staff is to approve the resolution and the loan to Austin Brothers Beer Company. They've been a good corporate citizen, very good for the city, and we see this as a win-win.
Awesome. Thank you, Greg. I'll open up public comment for anyone, including the Austin Brothers, if they'd like to. Nothing?
You don't, it's up to you.
You don't have to, if somebody might have a question.
If they have a question, we can ask you one.
Any written...
No.
Or comments? No? Close the public comment, open up city council discussion. Everybody had an opportunity to look it over, they...
Yeah, Greg's. The city has had a good staff of trying to find something that works for them and to get it done quick, and they've been a great community partner, so why not, right?
I agree with Shawn. I mean, I think this was a win-win, as Greg presented, and any and all questions that I had, Greg, were covered over your memo and the information you gave us, so I'm very comfortable.
Thank you.
Agree for motion. Move to set resolution number 2017-01, a resolution approving the amendment to the Austin Brothers Beer Company LLC Brownfield Plan.
Second.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
No reports, communications, and petitions. First up is Eric Peterson of the Fresh Palate Gourmet Food and Catering, request to host a beer festival on Saturday, September 30th, 2017. I gave a brief presentation, and we also have quite a bit of info from the, in our packet. Did you have anything else to add, other than what?
Noah, I think the department heads all responded, and there were no problems, and I think we did send you a letter to say what we, what the department heads had found.
Okay, yeah, I saw that too, and appreciate the communication back and forth with some of the questions there. The only one I have that I'm not, and it was quite a bit, I was trying to keep up with the emails, but the other Second Avenue businesses, there is no contention to this with the other businesses, I mean, they'll obviously stay open. If they're open, if they're even open, that's from 6:00 to 9:00 on that evening, but you didn't, you didn't have any issues with them? We haven't had any issues. We wanted to make sure it was all here with the council first before we went ahead and contacted all of the systems. Okay, okay.
Not going to be much different than when we've had the Friday night events.
I didn't think so.
Winery has that harvest festival.
So it's...
So you'll take our action today and go back and finalize on all that? Yeah, we hope they all stay open. I mean, it's supposed to create a community event, so hopefully the businesses will stay open.
Yeah, sure.
Anybody, any other questions or comments?
One, that we appreciate the lead time, that you brought this up so early and so you have some time to work on it. Just out of curiosity, because of the day, do you have a bad weather plan, or would you reschedule it, or?
Ten it off. Ten it off, yeah. Ten it off, and then we're going.
All right.
That was good.
I will say that last year I attended a blues festival or a blues concert in the alley beside the store. It was very well organized, very well-run. I didn't see any misbehavior, and, you know, everybody had a great time, the music was wonderful. It was a very nice event, you know, and I'm looking forward to this one as well.
I think all your alley events have went over really well, and this is a little bit bigger, so.
Yep.
We appreciate you bringing something new here, and again, as you said in your letter, any chance to get people to Alpena and see how, what our community has to offer, are good chances.
Only other thing that will probably be going on during that month, and the intent will be that we make sure it's done well ahead, is the conversion on the two-way streets that we're looking at as after Labor Day. So the idea would be is that, most ahead as planned, we would do it quickly right after Labor Day, and that will all be taken care of well before your event, so that there isn't any conflict there.
Excellent.
We may be very happy to close the street for a little while at that point.
Could be. Hopefully with the work all done, so that we don't have that to deal with.
Do you need approval on that, Karen?
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. You're all set. Next up, comprehensive annual financial report, fiscal year ended June 13th, 2016. We have Phil Straley and Mark Sandula from Straley Lamp and Fransline.
Every time you guys are here, it makes me think how fast time goes. Have I ever just seen you guys in here?
It seems like the clock is ticking, and I just saw Penny before, and she said, "I just saw you." You're in. I feel like I'm answering, showing up every...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Phil Straley, with me is Mark Sandula from Straley Lamp and Fransline, and we're here to present and discuss the annual audit of the City of Alpena for the year ended June 30th, 16. There's three documents we have, one is this blue agenda sheet. It's going to keep us on task, and then also, there's two documents you should have received previously. One is the big round audit report, that's just full of all sorts of numbers and schedules and sub-schedules, but we're going to break it down very quickly to what we think are some key numbers. And then also, along with that, there's what's called an auditor's communications letter. Mark's going to handle most of the numbers, but if we could, I'd like to just go through the audit communications letter. It puts in English a few of, or summarizes the numbers that you find in the auditor's report. But on page one of that, in the second paragraph, we talk about our responsibilities, and our means us as the auditors, because this is basically your financial statements, your product, your work, but as auditors, we're required to do a few things. One is to offer an opinion on whether these financial statements are fairly presented, and Mark will get into that audit opinion. And there's certain analytical testing that we do along improving certain accounts and numbers, but also on page two, there's certain qualitative aspects of any audit, and what we'd just like to point out is that there are certain significant estimates that become or comprise part of the audit. One is depreciation. Depreciation is kind of a, an intangible asset or a calculation of your actual physical assets, but it's an estimate, because we don't know how long a truck is going to last or a building is going to last. So, the audit contains those estimates. Also, certain receivables might have an allowance for doubtful accounts, and again, there's an estimate of any, what we think might be doubtful corrections or accounts, but we also then have... also then have liabilities for pensions. And in order to come up with that liability, we actually rely on the actuarial report, that the city engages actuaries to measure that. But in their report, they have to also use certain estimates, future employee wages, inflation, mortality rates, how long is an employee going to live and be on the retirement, drawing retirement plans. So again, a number of estimates in the auditor's report. Also, we're happy to report no difficulties encountered while working on the audit, nor any disagreement with management. As always, management is very professional with what they do. On page four, just want to briefly touch on an accounting standard that has been issued, but it has not trickled down through your financial statements yet, and it has to do with what I've called OPEB, or Other Post-Employed Benefits. Putting this into layman's terms, what we're talking about are health insurance costs, and could be also life insurance. Right now, we have a pretty good idea what that liability is, but you're not required to record that in your financial statements yet, other than in the footnotes. But it is a pretty big number, and much like the pension liability, that is now an integral part of your balance sheet, your income statement, the liability for those health insurance costs is probably about 2.9 million right now. So again, that's coming, but we've got another year, or two years before that will hit the financial statements. Then also on page four, federal awards, quite often governmental entities that receive a certain amount of money have to have a separate audit of that federal funds. The threshold that triggers that audit used to be half a million dollars, you were right around that mark, but fortunately, the federal rules have now moved that threshold up to 750,000. So you did not have to, or you are not required to have an audit of those federal funds under those kinds of things. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mark, and he'll go through the round audit report, and get on some of those numbers.
Thank you, Phil. Going down the agenda there, the C2, the, just to curl for Karen and Julie, that the City of Alpena has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, with a 22nd consecutive year, last year of 2015, and hopefully this 2016 will be their 23rd year. I think we're like the Red Wings, that's just hanging over our heads, but I think we're going to get her done, so.
Unlike the Red Wings.
With that, you're all veteran council members, so I can skip over what consists of the report. Basically, it's in three basic sections. The first section is an introductory section that has a transmittal letter from the city that explains some of the face of the profile of the city, and some textual things, trying to explain what goes on in the city, and then you have your visioning document. And the second section is the financial section, which is the guts and glue of the report, that that's recorded by governmental auditing and recording standards, so you have your financial statements and your footnotes, individual statements, and last but not least is the statistical section, which is an add-on of all the statistical data that the city can put there, and you can learn some interesting facts on trivial pursuit for the City of Alpena. So like I said, the A and C are add-ons that make it a CAFER, or Comprehensive Report, and B is the government rule of the report. So with that, the only two pages of this 198-page report are page 31 and 32, that belong to Straley Lamp and Friends Line, and everything else is the responsibility of the city. So we have to give what's called an independent authors' report, which is our opinion on the financial statements, and that's on page 31. Basically, the report on financial statements is the City of Alpena's activity for the year ended June of 16. And the second paragraph says that the city is responsible for the financial statements and anything that are in there, and then our responsibility is to give an opinion, which is the last sentence of that section. So we believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinions, and the opinion is the last paragraph on page 31. So in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business activities, aggregate, discreetly presented component units in each major fund of the City of Alpena, Michigan as of June 30th, 16, in accordance with a common principles generally accepted in the United States of America. This is a standard, what they call an unmodified opinion, that there's no exceptions, that we think that everything that's in this report is materially accurate, and wouldn't be misleading to a person that's reading your report. Go through some numbers. If you turn to page 139, that's your general fund individual financial statement, and it shows four columns on there. Basically, we have a budget, the original budget for June of 16, and the final budget for June of 16, and then actual amount for June of 16 versus the 2015 actual, and I don't have, in this particular exhibit, I don't have the subtotals that I'm going to go through now. So basically, the city operated the 2016 fiscal year with a budget of about $9.8 million, which is up from 2015, which was $9 million. And the total difference was the city spent a lot of state and federal grant money that they didn't have in 2015. So if you go on page 139 there, the difference between the state revenue in '16 was $1,005 versus $1,072, which was almost a $400,000 increase in state revenue. Federal revenue went from 2825 to 495,000, so that was a $492,000 increase. And ambulance revenues increased by about $100,000 during the year, so basically, that's the major differences between the 2015 and 2016 fiscal year. So overall, your total city revenues increased by $1,002,000 of 2015 versus 2016, and it went from $8,900,000 up to $10,108,000. Starting on page 40, it's, 140 of all the departments of the city, the general government increased from $1,004,000 to $1,009,000, which, about half a million dollars was that grant money that the city spent, so that you increased your rental rehab expenditures, and there was additional, can't remember what the second grant was. Yes.
I think Parks and Recreation had some too.
Okay. The bike, bike pathway was upgraded substantially.
The trailhead was built.
Getting older, 10 years plus. And then, and then basically, the next three pages are just, if you take the departments, it's, it's what I said was the actual versus 2015 and the budget. So basically, 2015 and 2016 were identical, except for the grant activity, and in the public safety, you bought a couple of new police vehicles, and in ambulance, you bought a new ambulance. So that was a major capital outlay that was increased 16 over 15. So in public safety, they spent $129,000 more, $80,000 of it was just for the vehicles and equipment, and ambulance spent $88,000 more, $73,000 was for the new ambulance. Then going the other way, the public works and highways and streets spent a little less money, because they didn't have capital outlay activity going in 2016 as much as they did at 15. And then in the Parks and Recreation, was a lot going on, the bike path and the covered bridge, and those kinds of things, but those were all funded. So basically, the city increased their budget from $9 million to $9.8 million by getting additional revenues, and it ended up in about the same place. So on the bottom of page 144, the city had an original budget that they expected to lose $239,617, but they really increased the equity by $283,000, so that was a $523,000 to the good, that happened because the budget came out better than the city originally expected. And then you increased your budget by $283,000 versus 15, where you were at. So overall, 2016 was a very good year, where you get grant money in, that's somebody else's money, and spend it on the city, so that was a good thing. Last but not least, is the recap of the city's activity. I lost my brochure. And that's on page 54. So this is a recap of the general fund, total revenue and transfers, which is the total revenue column, which is the left column on page 54 for the general fund. So you have total revenues of $10,108,694, add that to some borrowing of $13,600, which comes up to the $10,122,294, and then it was expenditures of $9,393,571, with transfers to other city funds of $445,000, which came up to the total of $9,838,571. And overall, the city increased or changed their fund balance by $283,723, ending with a fund balance of $3,215,863, which was about the same. The end of 15 was 32.5% of the total expenditures, and you bumped it up to 32.7. When you're talking $9.8 million, that's not a lot of change, and you've got exactly the same number of days on hand to run the city, 119 days. Anything over 60 is considered pretty good, and anything over 90 is really good. You have the cash flow to operate the city for 119 days before you have to even get any revenue at all. Majority of the revenue in the city comes in in the first three months, but your property taxes are July, August, and September, so overall, the city's in excellent position moving into this year, and it's now half older, so. And with that, are there any questions about some of the numbers in the report? I know, you know, it's 198 pages, and it's kind of overwhelming, but...
It's a general, general question, that's kind of reliant on expertise. Overall, it's encouraging and positive, but as you put this together, do you, does any area strike you that you think they could do a better job here, or, you know, this is an area that you agree?
No, we don't really make any opinions on the operations, and it was just kind of numbers, people.
That's the safe, safe answer. That's a safe answer.
Well, that's, I don't know, that's the only answer that, I don't know, there's no place in, in this report that we report on the operations of the city and how efficient these are, but if you get to the point where you're, you're below a 15% fund equity, and you're at 32.7, we'd have to make a comment. Or if you're a going concern, like the City of Detroit, or whatever, but that's not the case here, so I guess I'm going to go with my safe answer. But no, that, obviously, the city's very well-run, and you have, you have a budget, you pretty well stick to it on the conservative side, and it's no, departments were trampling on their budget, that they all come in on budget most of the, most of the time. So with that, I'll say that the city is very well-run, you know, from a financial point, if you use the budget as a, as a guideline, then they can pretty well stick to your budget.
Thank you.
Very good. What choice do they have? They can?
Selfie.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Always good to hear from you, and certainly good to hear that, that our financial situation is being reported properly, and is always put together very well. We appreciate you coming, appreciate your report.
Thank you. Thanks to the staff of the city, because we bother them a little bit.
Just a little.
Of course, we appreciate their patience.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And just a, obviously, just a quick comment that, from me, that, we just certainly applaud the department heads and the staff, and Karen in her office, because this, and Adam and Greg, pretty much everybody, we all are well aware that that money just doesn't get given to us, and don't just say, "Hey, you've got an extra million dollars if you'd like to spend it," so that grant money is hard work to get, and we really appreciate that, so obviously pointed out in the, in the CAFER, so our gratitude for that. And I don't know if there's any other comments you want on our receipt and file for the audit itself.
Yes, please, yes.
I move our receipt and file.
Second.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Before we close, real quick, Stephanie from the, from the Film Festival walked in. I'd like to, I read the proclamation earlier, but if you'd like to walk up.
Thank you. I thought it was at seven, I was sitting in the office waiting, and I'm down, sorry.
That kind of occurred to us.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, just in time.
Number five. I'd like to make a quick comment. So it is the 5th Annual Thunder Bay International Film Festival, and it seems like I can't believe we've made it this far, and we would not have made it this far without the support of the wonderful community, and of course, the City Council and the City of Alpena, so we really appreciate that, and hope you guys can join us as the festival grows and grows.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
Boy, it's grown too, hasn't it? It's gotten a lot bigger.
That's right. That's our...
No, we have one more.
You're in a hurry.
I am.
Sorry.
No, I'm not, actually.
I mean, I'm not. It seems like I'm kind of punching through stuff, though. I appreciate you guys looking out for me. Obviously, my mind's somewhere else, but I don't mean to be. New business we do have, municipal council appointments to boards and committees. And we have a list of the committees instead.
I guess I just make one quick comment about it. I've had some discussion with some of you regarding appointments, and I think one thing that was pointed out to me, and I think would make sense for the council, I think you had talked a year or so ago about doing two-year appointments, so that you didn't just get out and suddenly you're off. And it would probably make sense, if we do it every two years, is to do it in the even year, since we have elections in the odd years. So if there is a change, then that's the appropriate time then to do the appointment of committees. So that would be, I guess, one thing, if you wanted to consider that tonight, would be to adopt something of that sort, that appointments to our committees and boards will be every two years, in even number of years.
And I certainly agree with that. I think Karen and I were chatting a month ago, I actually thought we did.
I did too.
I know we discussed it, and I thought we did. I went back and watched a couple YouTube meetings, specifically, I watched the one from last year at this time. We had a long discussion about the committees. actually thought we did. I know we discussed it and I thought we did. I went back and watched a couple YouTube meetings. Specifically, I watched the one from last year at this time. We had a long discussion about the committees we were on. We talked about this visioning behind me and a few other things, but we really didn't adopt anything. And I agree with Greg. I think it, I don't think, I don't remember any opposition to keeping committees for two years, but we really didn't establish anything. And so if you'd like to do that and then we really, then unless someone's got an issue with their committee that they're on, we really don't have any action to take about committees because this would be the first of the year. And then we would just divvy them back up a year from now.
Yeah, I would move that we would have the committee run for two years on even years after, you know, the odd year election. So that makes perfect sense. So there's a motion in there somewhere, Karen.
There, guys.
And you'll write up a policy statement? Is that what will cover that? Someone will? I look at you, but I don't know. Or is that just a...
I think it's more just a...
So we don't put anything in writing? We just remember that we did it?
It's in writing.
I can't even get through a meeting.
It is in the minutes.
So it'll be in the minutes?
It'll be in the minutes.
Very good.
That motion.
If we could, before we close this out, I would just like to suggest that if we sit on boards and committees where there are minutes capped, that we forward those minutes either to Karen and she can dispense them to other council members, just so that we all have a general idea on what's going on in everyone else's committee. Because frankly, I have no idea what goes on on your committees. When we get questions about what goes on on your committee, then maybe we can answer them.
Sure. Be less cumbersome than asking for a report from everybody.
The only issue that I may run into is a lot of confidential information on the target board that, you know, is not for, I can't, I can't put out. So I'll have to clarify with Jim just to see what we can share, maybe a summary report or something like that. But he does the annual reports on that as well, so.
Hey, we're going to find out eventually.
Yeah, when he shows up, we're going to find out eventually anyway, so.
And if anybody comes back from a meeting, obviously, and you want to give a presentation at our meeting outside of the minutes, I mean, if you want to forward the minutes and you can, that would be fine. But if for some reason, because you do on recycling from time to time.
Yeah, there's an awful lot that goes on.
Just throw it on the agenda for that week.
Yeah, I'll be happy to.
Because it would just be a presentation if you wanted to say more than what meeting with the minutes.
You want that as a motion? Do you want to require us to do that?
Well, we've already got one on the, we have to vote on the motion to go two years with the committees. That was just discussion. That was just, we were just in the discussion phase.
Are we ready?
I think so.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
I don't think we need a motion.
I don't think we do. I just think it's...
Throw it on the agenda if you want. Or forward the meeting. I will read Jim.
Second.
You are watching All About Alpena. All About Alpena is produced by Alpena Marketplace Productions.